Good evening, welcome to the Special Planning Commission meeting, Grand Blank Township, November 11th, 2020. Please rise, join us in Pledge Allegiance.
We pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under back, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Three planning commission members present this evening. We have most everyone, we have Mr. Brown, Mr. Mansour, Ms. Coulter, Mr. Robertson, Mr. Yoncho, Mr. Gellings, Mr. Banderski, and Mr. Horsia. We are missing Mr. Johnson, who was ill this evening. Also present, obviously, is our zoning and planning director, Mr. Mark Lloyd. First item on our agenda is approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented by Mr. Mansour, support by Mr. Yoncho. All those in favor, sign with a saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes eight zero. No minutes this evening. There is no public presence. I guess we can skip over public comment. Do we have any correspondence? Well, we do have some at our desk.
Handouts.
Handouts from planning department. That brings us to old business, master plan discussion. Mr. Lloyd, did you want to lead us?
I sure will, thank you very much. And thanks, everybody, for taking the time out of your early evening, and hopefully not late into the evening, to be here and help with this. I appreciate the comments from the last meeting we had on November 5th, and as a result, felt that it was a good idea to try to get together quickly to have some dialogue. There seemed to be a couple of items that need to be discussed, and maybe a gap in some communication. And so I wanted to fill that gap and make sure that we had what we needed. And as I started going through things, I realized, you know, there's a lot to cover. And so what I would like to do, doesn't have to be lengthy, but there is, you know, a considerable amount of things to take a look at. What I'd like to do is take a minute and sort of set the stage with a couple of things. And so bear with me, give me, you know, a handful of minutes, and I'll get through this quickly now. And I say that I did hand out or send out a memo to all of you, a letter, if you will, and I realize that, you know, it was later in, or earlier in this day, so it hasn't been with you long. And what I wanted to do is just run through it real quick to give everybody, establish a foundation for our discussion tonight. So this is a follow-up to our meeting from November 5th and the June 30th Planning Commission meeting. And then it really springboards off a July 2nd memorandum on proposed amendments to the future land use plan. I've included a series of maps, and that's attached to the email I sent, plus you have hard copies tonight at your desk or your dais and your tables, so everybody has a copy of that. The reason for these items being considered future land use map changes is during the time we opened the master plan up, I had a number of inquiries from folks coming in about rezoning. And I let them know that what they were proposing to do would in fact take master plan amendments. And I let them know that that was part of what we were working on. And so that's part of the reason that you have some of that. And I should point out that, you know, if the master plan, future land use map is amended, that change would accommodate future rezoning requests that could increase density and allow attached housing units in the township. And I should also point out that these changes will play an important role, I'm gonna take this off to talk. These changes will play an important role in facilitating the draft master plan goal of accommodating a variety of housing types, including, as we discussed at length, the missing middle. And the request that we have, we have six areas comprising 11 separate parcels, ranging from seven and a half to 69 acres. The draft plan was submitted for review by the Planning Commission on August 27th, and at that time, it included the future map changes. And at that time, following that, the Planning Commission authorized, requested authorization from the board to distribute the plan to the public and to the outside agencies who would review it. So at that time, we were well underway in the review process of the plan. And included in this correspondence, I've given you a map again, same one that you've seen, I tried to clean it up a little bit from, you know, just make it a little easier maybe to read. And in fact, we have properties totaling 164 and a half acres being proposed for land use changes. There is one exception, all of them are being proposed to change to, from existing single family to accommodate detached and attached units. And so there's gonna be some change there, and that helps to accommodate that missing middle that was discussed and identified in the preparation of the plan, feedback we got from the community members, and the discussion we had with the steering committee as well as the Planning Commission. And so there is an exception, there's one that's proposed to go from residential to commercial, and that's simply due to impacts over there, and opportunities, I should say, also, for the dirt highway extension project. And then underneath that, you've got a list of the parcels. It gives you an idea of the size, the parcel number, and they're referenced on the map that you have. As I mentioned, all of them has a current zoning designation of low-density single, not zoning, excuse me, master plan, low-density single-family, and the proposal is for moderate-density residential, except for the one that's proposed to go to commercial. And I also want to point out that if, in fact, the master plan land use is changed for any of these properties, approving any subsequent residential rezone could result in increased density to the property as well as allowing attached units versus detached only. And I put that in the table below to give you an idea of what the density changes could in fact be. The highest density that would be allowed in this proposed land use designation is 10 units per acre. And again, I want to make sure that this point is clear to the best of my ability in any way. This is not proposing, or recommending, or applying any zone changes. That all occurs at a later date by the property owner would need to come in and make application for those zone changes. And at that time, the township would engage in a pretty substantial analysis of what that would be and what that would mean to the area. So you can designate an area from a future land use to, you know, moderate density, and everything that's there right now is all fine and dandy, it's not gonna create a problem, it's not gonna be non-conforming, because non-conforming doesn't happen with the master plan, it only happens with zoning. But the key to this is that if the township were ever to entertain a zoning amendment, or excuse me, a zone change to these properties, it would be at that time that we would have the ability to take a look at the property in conjunction with those surrounding properties to ensure that appropriate zoning is in fact put in place. And there's a range of densities and development type that are able to be put into this proposed moderate-density residential land use plan. So in other words, you could have a pretty good number of different zoning designations that would be compatible with that moderate density, from single-family residential, it's still allowed in that moderate density, which most of the property is, to low-density multiple family and/or medium-density multiple family. Again, the maximum density would be 10 units per acre. But some of the other zoning designations only allow, you know, maybe up to two, or up to three or four units per acre. So that doesn't mean just because the underlying master plan land use says you can have a density of 10, that it's automatic that all the property will be converted to 10. That analysis is still in the hands of the Planning Commission, and then ultimately, the Township Board, because unlike the master plan, the zoning ordinance, or a change to the zoning ordinance and/or a zoning district needs to go before the Township Board for approval. The master plan does not, it's a policy document, and it is adopted by the Planning Commission exclusively. So with all that having been said, I'll just reference the map that you have, and I've given you a larger version of that as well. And the map refers to all the subsequent properties underneath it, and we'll get into those in a little bit. What I also wanted to do is establish a little bit of background from the current master, well, the draft, I'll call it, the draft master plan, the one that you have before you. And what I would point out, and you have a copy of this in front of you as well, and it's page 95, or actually, if you don't, you have it in your master plan, if you want to just look at that on page 95. And on the second column down on the right side of that document, it says moderate-density residential, and then it goes on to read about what that is. This is moderate-density residential category, locates the desired placement of all developments, densities greater than four dwelling units per acre and less than 10 dwelling units per acre. These areas are well-suited for, as we discussed several times, the missing middle housing formats. And that includes attached, single-family dwellings, and I'd like to include detached there, but we don't need to, I've discovered, we don't have to say detached, but I think it's a good idea to include that in the master plan, that's one thing I picked up on today. Attached, single-family, small-scale, multiple-family buildings. Suitable for any area of the township that is served by water and sewer, and may be configured into mixed-density neighborhoods. Parcels in this category should have non-motorized access. And again, non-motorized access is another highlight of our draft master plan, and the recommendation is there is that that be considered a part of it. Access to the business district as well as recreation assets, and are appropriately located closer to commercial centers and corridors than those in the lower-density categories. Well, that all makes good sense to me, and I hope that, you know, as you folks have read this, I'm sure you've all read that, and maybe you've heard it again tonight, that you realize that, you know, there's, this is not an amendment or modification to the current plan that is absolute and is gonna result in, you know, all of this increased density immediately. What it will do is it will allow for and facilitate for that. And then in the, on page 98 of the draft plan, you've got a list here of different land use categories, and it lists them all, and it just gives you a kind of a quick description. In this one, the first two words are missing-middle housing formats, including single-family dwelling units and small-scale, multiple-family buildings, densities between four and 10 dwelling units per acre. So I just want to reinforce that. I think it's important for the commission to know and understand that this is not a automatic 10 units per acre for anybody, anytime, if we were to make these changes. And so I'd like to move on to one of the other handouts, and that's a couple of sections of the zoning ordinance. And it starts with the R4, single-family residential, and we do have some areas of the township that is designated that way. And what that does is it simply identifies, you know, the fact that you can have single-family dwellings there. This would work within that master plan category. As a matter of fact, as I mentioned, even the R1, R2, and R3 that already exist in those areas that are proposed to be amended, those are allowed to stay, they're not, they don't become non-conforming, and people can build accordingly. What this does is it just simply opens the door for, and I think the best way to describe it is to allow for attached units. I think that's the one thing that is changed, is it does in fact allow for attached units. So you could have duplexes and other things, up to 10 units per acre. And so if you go through that and turn to what is page 3-12, you'll see the very first thing on that is single-family detached dwellings. And it goes on to a whole variety of other things, and I don't think we need to get into that. What I'd like to do is just move on to the next section, which is called low-density multiple family. And keep in mind, these are the zoning designations. These all fit within and/or in conjunction with the moderate residential that we're talking about. So here, in the low-density, this one allows for four units per acre, that's the maximum density, so property that might come in and get rezoned for low-density would only be allowed to have four units per acre. It's not gonna have 10, it's only gonna have four, and they have to have a minimum site size of two acres, and then all the setback requirements and things of that nature. The one thing I want to point out on is that as you move through this, if you do, and you want to turn to page 3-14, under the special land uses, you can see that number 15, Roman numeral 15, about two-thirds of the way down, identifies single-family and two-family dwellings as special land uses. So it still allows for development of, single-family development. And I think that that is a very important point, and I'll probably reemphasize that a number of times as the night goes on. And then when you move to the next density, which is the medium-density multiple family, and again, this is the zoning, that is the one that allows up to 10 units per acre. And we do have considerable amount of property in town that is already zoned for medium-density multiple family, and they have 10 units per acre, and things seem to be working out just fine. And so point is, you know, these, they're, these are the true regulatory documents. The master plan is in fact the policy document associated with how we would allow that. And the zoning ordinance is, gives you the idea of the densities, specific density setbacks and other development standards. And then on another one of the sheets that I gave you, and this comes out of the zoning ordinance as well, not proposed to be changed, is page 417. And in there, it talks about housing in non-single-family districts. And this talks about the low-density multiple, the medium-density multiple, and high-density multiple. However, I want to point out, the high-density multiple would not fit within this proposed moderate density. High-density does not work in the moderate residential land use. Low-density and medium does. But what it says is, single-family or two-family dwellings are permitted as special land uses when there's a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet per building, provided the lot size be equal to the minimum lot size of any abutting, single-family zoning district. So that tells you a lot, that if you're gonna have either of those districts, if it's next to a zoning district that's residential, a single-family residential, and it's larger than the area that's being proposed, they wouldn't be able to rezone that. And I think that's a critical point, because there's limitations built in to minimize the impact on the existing, single-family residential development in the township. And that's a critical component of this whole effort here. We're trying to find ways to get a few more rooftops in town and provide for a wider variety of housing types, but we don't want to do so at the expense of our existing, single-family. And so we've got provisions in our ordinance, our regulatory document, that prohibits that from happening. Now, that doesn't mean that somebody can't come in and do an ROS or a PUD or something, and push the envelope a little bit, and get creative with the way they want to do things. But I can assure you that as we review those proposals, we would be looking to make sure that there's appropriate mitigation incorporated into whatever the design of that project might be to either minimize or completely avoid any impacts on those, single-family districts. So I think that these comments I'm making, they did need to be made probably at an earlier date. So I'll apologize to you for not having brought this, what I consider a pretty, you know, significant topic to your attention on its own. I kind of lumped it in, if you will, with the entirety of the master plan from the exercises, but I think you'll see, and hopefully, I'm not running through this too quickly. I think you'll see that what this proposal, these ideas of changing the master plan land use, they will likely only be beneficial to the township, and only under poor planning, and we don't do much of that here, we've got a lot of good folks here in the Planning Commission and in the community who make sure we don't get away with that, with a project occur that's going to be impactful to the nearby neighborhood. So I think, as I'm saying, the area it's going to propose to be near, that's all gonna be important with regards to how and what we might be able to do. And in some of these areas that maybe wouldn't be larger than the lot size of the, any abutting, single-family, they would be limited to, single-family development. You know, they wouldn't be able to put some of these larger, more dense projects in, they just wouldn't be allowed to do it. And so that kind of concludes some of the technical, or most of the technical review that I wanted to cover to sort of set the stage. And again, I don't, I don't take it for granted that just because I just said everything, that it's well-understood. And I realize that it, there may be a need for some of that to be digested a bit. But by all means, if anyone has a question about that, particularly anything associated with any of the language in any of the areas that I've read, please just bring that to my attention, and I'll be happy to do my best to work through that. The other thing I wanted to do was take a moment and walk through our consultant's recommendations on these same things. They're very short, they're very straightforward, they're very simple. And on the first one, which is item number one, map number one, I'll find mine over here, attached to the letter that you got today. On that, that property, I think everybody, and if I'm mistaken, please correct me, but it seems to me that everybody was opposed to changing that. And so was our consultant, and what her comments were was that, that current designation at that particular location is consistent with the context, and additional density would not serve or support any adjacent or nearby commercial. It's just nothing around there. If you, you have to go quite a distance to have, you know, any higher density or any commercial uses in the area. So for that reason, that's what was stated there. Current designation is consistent with the context, so basically saying, let's not change that. And additional density would not serve or support any adjacent or nearby commercial. And we do have to keep in mind that part of the planning process isn't just to either get more business or get more development, per se, but it's to do it in a manner that makes good sense, that's planned. And when you read, and additional density would not serve or support any adjacent or nearby commercial, you know, what that's saying is, you know, those people, you increase the density, you're gonna have a higher number of people who have to drive further distance to go get services and goods that they might want. So that's not the kind of thing that we try to plan for.
Excuse me, Director Lloyd, where is that?
I, you know, you may not have gotten a copy of that, it's a very simple sheet, and I kind of pulled it from some notes that I have, and I'm realizing that you may not have gotten that one.
I don't think we do have it.
Where our copying was done, I'll go, I'll be happy to take two minutes and go copy this, if you guys would like. That's not a problem, if you guys want to take them back, or I can run through them, they're all one-sentence comments.
Okay, so basically, if we're following along, for those of us at home, the first 45-acre parcel, which was in here shown as item number one,
Yes.
Which, which they, which was originally recommended to go to medium-density multifamily, is now being recommended to just stay as it is.
It was a request, it wasn't necessarily.
It was a request.
A request. And, and I believe that that's what everybody has said on this matter, all of the comments that I've gotten.
No, mine was to go.
On that one?
On that one, yeah. Because enough away from everyone, that going to medium-density wouldn't really impact any of the surrounding areas, so.
Mine was the same.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, I, I'm not sure where you've gotten your input from, or maybe it got kind of filtered or changed or anything, yeah.
These comments from the consultant?
No, no, some, from some of the people driven by the sites and have provided input, so, anyway.
Well, I did, I misspoke, and I apologize for that, but I'm, I'll stay a little tighter on these. Then our, the next one, item number two, is, that's recommended. First one was not recommended, this one is recommended. Additional density matches the context and supports commercial development at Hill and Genesee. Number three that you have, and we're gonna go through each one of these, this isn't the end of it, I just wanted to include the consultant's comment. That one, again, is recommended, to be incorporated. This, the character of this area is expected to change with the extension, and commercial uses are most appropriately suited to high-visibility corridors. So that's the comment from the consultant on that. Area number four is recommended, and that's based on the proximity to the city of Grand Blank with existing higher-density development. Number five, this area is close enough to Tech Village for the density to support the desired commercial development in that area. And then number six, that references the properties being in proximity to the city of Grand Blank and existing commercial development in the township as well. So those are the comments from.
Was the last one a yes or no?
That is a yes, that's recommended. So I'll put it this way, number one is not recommended, number two, three, four, five, and six are recommended. That's from the consultant. And I would concur with that, those conclusions, frankly. So from there, the idea was to give the commission an opportunity to express all of your individual concerns, comments, or whatever else you might want to add on all of these properties. And we can start with number one and work our way through. Again, that is an area for discussion by the Planning Commission. And I also, I want to take a moment just to point out that I also provided you with a master plan, a future land use plan that shows the areas that we're talking about. So you've got both the zoning district map that has numbers one through six, and you have the master plan map, that references the same property, so that you could see the zoning and the master plan designation. So with that, Mr. Gellings, that concludes my initial presentation. I'm happy to help facilitate whatever else you might want to, however else you might want to proceed with going through the properties.
I had one question, you were referencing on page 4-17. I wasn't 100% clear what that wording meant regarding the minimum lot size, provided, 15,000 square feet per building, provided the lot size shall be equal to the minimum lot size of any abutting, single-family zoning district.
What that means is that if you've got properties in an adjacent, abutting, single-family district that are less than 15,000 square feet, then you would not, you would not be able to build on, you would not be able to build, single-family or two-family dwelling units, even though they're permitted as a special land use, you wouldn't be able to approve them that way. Because that lot size, what they're saying is, what we don't want to see is properties that are surrounding it that are, you know, small, single-family lots, let's say, you know, 100 by 150, you know, whatever we might have, a 15,000-square-foot lot, something less than that. We wouldn't want to have multiple-family or increased densities immediately adjacent to those properties. That's the idea, is not to put those, the increased-density properties immediately adjacent to the existing, single-family districts, unless the lot sizes were the same or greater. So in other words, if you had a half-acre property, this is about a third, 15,000 is about a third acre, give or take. If you had, all the properties around there were half-acre, then you could in fact build one on a 15,000-square-foot property. You could do that. You could put a building on that 15,000-square-foot footprint. But keep in mind that with the zoning designation, you still have minimum lot sizes. And if you move to the minimum-site areas for the low-density, multiple-family, you still have to have at least two acres. So in order to accommodate a minimum lot size of 15,000 per building, so you could have, you could have a property, let me see if I could do the math in my head, I'm just gonna multiply that by six, you have 90,000 square feet, give or take, because that'd be two acres, you'd have to have a two-acre property, and for each, single-family or duplex that would be permitted in that district, those have to have 15,000 square feet apiece. Does that help?
So this is only in reference to the, you put a single-family, it's not a, it's the exception, not the rule that we're talking about.
It's, it's the exception.
Okay.
So on that same page, the paragraph directly below it, I'm trying to, I'm trying to kind of connect that with some of the other information that you've provided here. But it says, multiple-family dwellings are permitted in a building more than four stories. dwellings are permitted in a building more than four stories high, provided the site is at least five acres in size and has direct access, blah, 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 blah. So I'm trying to correlate how that designation works for a multiple-family dwelling with, excuse me, a second, with, ah, in the one that you spoke about earlier, which is, there it is. It's pages 3-16 and 17 where there's, the, well, medium-density multiple-family residential has a maximum of three stories or 40 foot. So how do those two kind of line up with each other?
Well, the zoning overrides. What this section is telling you here is that that's the maximum. So you can have a multiple-family dwellings are permitted in a building that are actually more than four stories high, provided the site is at least five acres. But that just allows for it. That gives you kind of the big picture. The zoning over here that you're reading and referencing is what establishes that density, those site sizes and so on. It gives you the specific information. And that's saying you can only have four acres, four units per acre. And it's not until you move to the medium, yeah, the medium-density that you can have 10 units.
Right.
And all of these do in fact regulate the height. And this section here, it's also part of the zoning ordinance. It's referencing multiple-family dwellings permitted in a building more than four stories high, provided the site is at least five acres in size, has direct access onto an arterial highway. And then when you, if you go over to these specific sections, they regulate that even further down to say you can't have it any higher than 35 or two stories, or 40 or three stories, whichever is less. So that's how, that's the difference between the two. This just drills down and gets much more specific. This is a little more general, allowing that to occur, but right now our zoning ordinance does not in fact allow for that, at least the specific sections of the zoning ordinance. This is a more general section of the zoning ordinance that's referencing simply those LDM, MDM, and HDM multiple-family units or designations.
By right, they can have a three-story building under the MDM. There's a special use that would allow a four, and you can go even higher than that if you meet this additional criteria. Is that correct?
If they meet additional criteria.
And then it's maximum on the outside of 10 units per acre of building?
Not per building, per acre.
Per acre.
Yep, that ends it right there.
Building per acre.
Right. And units.
Units.
Per acre.
In a building, in a, in a single building.
It doesn't need to be in a single building. It could be in four buildings or whatever they decide, and the height would be based on however that property is being accommodated. So if they had a good-sized piece of land and they wanted to build it a little bit taller, they may be saving some open space, and that may be something that on that property, planning commission would be looking to have accomplished. But it doesn't restrict them to, what it restricts them to is the maximum density. And so if they have an opportunity to go higher, and if they do in fact obtain a special land use, then they could go through that process. That becomes the exception that Mr. Gellings was pointing out.
Does rental units play into the same scenario with these units? Or do they have to be single, units that are sold?
No, they could be rentals, for sure, yeah. They could be, yeah, they could be apartments, they could be duplexes, condominiums, you know, it could come in all different forms. But again, the zoning designation is going to make that determination. You may have, and right now we do have, properties in our, in these areas that we're proposing to change, that's single-family. So they can't build anything in those right now except for single-family. They would have to come in for a zone change. And depending on what that zone change was, no matter what it is, frankly, the planning commission would be compelled to take a look at the implications of whatever that zone, that rezoning might be. And if it's determined that that area can't accommodate either the density that they're asking for, or the unit type could be problematic, then the planning commission is not obligated to providing for or allowing that.
Can I ask a question that's related to this, but is more specific?
By all means, sure.
Redwood, on Grand Blank Road, those are, it's a high-density, I wasn't here when that was done, but it's a high-density project surrounded by single-family units. Was the zoning of that property initially single-family, or was there some other zoning on there that allowed that to go forward, or was that just decided by the planning commission to rezonate?
That was determined and approved by the planning commission, and I believe that that was done. I would have to double-check the zoning. It's not, I can't just pull that off the, I'm trying to find my map if I could. Maybe one of you remember, because that was a little bit before my time. I don't know, was that a residential open space? Do you remember? It was a residential open space.
It was an overlay.
It was actually quite controversial, because the underlying zoning was, you know, resident, single-family residential.
Right.
And they wanted to come in and have 100% attached units. And there was some question about whether that was allowed even under the residential open space, but they got it approved. And, you know, I think it was a whole condominium development, which is right next to the building.
To the west.
Were very much opposed, because it was obviously changing the character of that whole area.
And they were opposed to the additional access road coming in there, because when they built that condominium complex, I only learned this after I got here. I know the project was approved a number of years ago, but I did work with those folks at the condominium project, because they were still a little concerned about things. And there was that access road that they didn't want them to utilize, and that's not been utilized.
Only for fire and emergency. I think that's what the agreement was, that Ms. Calder was saying, I remember.
Only emergency purposes, but I think initially it was intended to be like we try to do, is to connect neighborhoods together.
They were vehemently opposed.
Yeah, yeah, and it is still blocked off.
Is there a physical barrier?
Yeah, yeah.
There is.
There is, it's still blocked off.
Presumably a fire truck or something.
Yeah, it's got a crash gate there, if you will, bar.
That's how they resolve that issue.
The other thing that I think that nearby residents, the reason that they ended up supporting it was that there was an issue with paving of the roads.
Yeah, something.
Undone garb.
Well, the developer hadn't done that, that's. Yeah, so this project somehow was kicking in some money to help pave the roads.
That was one of, that became the public benefit that I think when you guys were looking at this, put it over the line. I couldn't tell you exactly, but, you know, if I remember and I know how these are done, there usually needs to be a public benefit associated with a residential open space, and I believe that was considered to be a public benefit. And I think that helped to quell some of the concerns that those single-family residences to the east had.
Seems to work, it seems to have worked out pretty well.
It does. I mean, it seems to be working, doesn't seem to be a big traffic problem. It's not a high-density development per se. It's higher than the surrounding areas, but it's not a quote-unquote "high-density." It's all single-story duplex or fourplex units with attached garages and, you know, it has a, you know, reasonably decent appearance, depending on your perspective, but I understand they're very popular and they're pretty expensive.
Well, a friend of mine, I had him contact you. They're in the process of wanting to build a new home here in Grand Blank, and they are going to rent one of those units over there.
Oh.
On a temporary basis while their home is being built. It's really working out well for them as well.
Okay.
So any other things, items we want to bring up before we start going through each of these individually? Mr. Yacho?
I'm a little confused about, on page 315, item D near the top, do both of these conditions need to be met to satisfy the LDM, low-density? That the minimum lot size is 15,000 square foot, and the maximum density is four units per acre?
LDM.
For LDM?
Yes, I believe.
Because that math doesn't seem to work out.
Well, you have to have a site area of two acres.
Uh-huh.
And then the lot for each unit is required to be 15,000 square feet.
Okay, and a unit is a building or a dwelling?
That's the minimum lot size. Now, that doesn't mean you couldn't have two units on that, on that 15,000 square feet, so you could get the four units per acre.
Excuse me, but we're not talking about changing anything to LDM here, right? That's.
No, this is the zoning. This is a completely different issue.
Right.
So on 15,000 square feet, you can have four units?
No, on two acres.
On two acres, you can have four units. But it's four units per acre is what's written.
Okay.
And it's 15,000 square foot per unit?
Per lot.
Per lot.
So you can have multiple units.
We can take, I'd be happy to try to work through that confusion, but that's not, it's not part of the master-planning effort this evening, but I'd be happy to make sure that I clarify that for you. I really.
We'll work on it.
Yep, I understand your concerns, and I'll be happy to address that.
Mr. Van Der Skie.
I'd like to beg the indulgence of the commission and give me five minutes. I'm gonna, I want to build a little matrix to help us, I think I'll move along. And so what it is, is lots one through six. And as I call your name, I would like you to just tell me yes or no for the numbers. For example, the consultant and Mark are no on number one, yes on all the others.
So you're taking a vote?
I'm not taking a vote. I'm just taking a looksee. For example, if one of these had all yeses, there would not be much need for discussion. If one had, there's eight of us here, if one had four and four, then that's one we ought to discuss in greater detail. Allow us sufficient time, and hopefully that'll save us time. Okay? Do I have your?
Excellent idea.
I had that idea, but I appreciate the fact that you brought it up.
This is just kind of take, certain ones we're just gonna skip right through rather quickly.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want to give me yours? Yes, no, that's all I want.
Which?
One through six, in that order.
I am no on number one and yes on the rest.
Okay.
Mr. Brown?
And I agree with the chairman, no on one and yes on the rest.
Mr. Harsha?
No on one.
So no on one and yes on the rest?
Yeah.
Okay. Dolores?
I voted no on all of them except three.
No on one and three?
No on all of them, right?
Yeah.
The others are yes?
Yeah, I voted yes on three and no on the others.
She's got no on the majority of hers.
Oh, yes on three and no on the others?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Mansour?
I have yes on all of them except number four. I'm no on number four.
No on the first, yes on the way.
Mr. Yacho?
Give me just one second, please. My notes at home. I'm gonna vote, or you can record my definite no on number one, a yes on two and three, a no on four and five, and a yes on six.
Okay. Give me just one minute, let me.
Can I just, just while you're tabulating, I mean, what we're doing here, as I understand it, is that while Mr. Lloyd has pointed out that we're not finally changing any zoning here, but we are setting the tenor for it. And if someone sees that we've changed them, it would be actually, I won't say hard, but it would be more difficult to not approve that change. So while you've mentioned all these safeguards, in effect, you know, we are setting kind of the expectation that if someone comes in and proposes a project with this thing, that the planning commission will approve it. So in.
Thank you for that comment.
In that respect, I mean, we ought to be, you know, think very carefully about this, because they can always come in and change it. They can always come in and ask for a change. But here, we start to, you know, kind of grease the skids for it, so.
I appreciate that as well. If I could, I just want to say that I want to back up a little bit and just redraw the picture of the effort to do the master plan in the first place and to get the public input. Things that came from that public input and the community responses to the surveys referenced and identified a need for additional and more dense housing in different types of housing. This is in response to the community's input on our plan as well. And I do want to make sure that we're recognizing that this is meeting and setting the stage for establishing the township's ability to meet the community's interest in having a variety of housing types and, as was mentioned, higher density, a little higher density in some areas, and to provide for more residents to grow the community. I mean, that is part of what the community feedback was, and it's hard to do it without increasing density. I don't know how else we could do it. We've got some very low-density areas in the community, and really the best way to do that is that way. Now, I wouldn't want to look at what we're doing here as a, as a direct economic development tool, but it sure is a good indirect economic development tool, and it's one of the things we need in order to continue to grow the community from a residential standpoint and of course from a commercial standpoint, because if you don't have the rooftops, then the commercial and industrial development, you know, is going to look at places that meet their, their marketing needs. And so increasing that a bit, and this is not significant from an increase standpoint, you know, that's part of what we need to do too, is recognize that the feedback we got from the community is being, we're working towards that, which is part of what we're supposed to do when we adopt a master plan in the first place.
I've got a related question to what Mr. Mansour pointed out. So if someone comes in, wants to rezone the property, and it is approved to rezone, then the next step is they would come back with a project that they want, which would be separate and after the zoning's approved, correct?
Yes.
And would we still be able to restrict the zoning, the number of units per acre to, let's say, five, four or five, even though it's a maximum 10?
Well, I'll be straight up about that. Mr. Mansour is exactly right when he says that we're setting the stage and it would be more difficult. We would have to have reasons for that, you know? There would have to be topographical, there'd have to be proximity issues, there'd have to be something. And my point is, that's built into our master plan. The language I read you earlier, it clearly states that. It's already included in the master plan to say that we are going to take those surrounding properties into consideration when we look at rezoning. And that's an important part to have in there. If we don't have a provision like that in there, I'd be a little more concerned that somebody could simply come in and say, no, I want the maximum, that's just the way it is, and they push and push. And that doesn't mean that somebody couldn't push real hard and we would have to fold, you know, because of lawsuits and other things, but, you know, the fact is that we've got good, solid, sound language in the master plan that helps to protect the manner in which we would consider rezoning. that helps to protect the manner in which we would consider rezoning property.
Yeah.
Mr. Mansour's right, it does set precedent. It's not an automatic guarantee, but it would be difficult to give them less than the ten units per acre if, unless there were extenuating circumstances.
Yeah, yeah.
But by changing the, uh, future land use map, like you said, you're basically setting the stage for, you know, these, these developers and landowners who, you know, are making these requests to come in with a, you know, petition to change the zoning. And one of the criteria is, look at the future land use.
Sure, absolutely.
You know, when, I mean, some of us here, you know, have been involved in petitions for change of zoning. There's a whole series of criteria that we have to look at. Um, and I'm concerned that, you know, if we try to change the future land use map now, which makes it easier for the developers to do that, we're doing it on a very rushed kind of, you know, basis. Uh, because the criteria for getting a change of zoning are, are fairly specific. And you also get the benefit of, you know, input from the surrounding neighbors whenever there's a petition for a change of zoning. And we don't, you know, have the benefit of that. And I am fairly convinced that, you know, if we do, uh, the, the applications for zoning changes are gonna come in for the, the highest level of, you know, zoning that's allowed. Like for granted, in a moderate density residential unit, if we, you know, you could just have single-family detached units, but that's not usually why they want a ch- zoning change to, you know, moderate density residential, those are multiple family housing. If they wanna go up to ten units per acre, then, you know, and it's allowed by the zoning ordinance, that's what they're gonna ask for.
Mr. Bandersky, do we have any that were unanimous on it?
Let me go back and just, I wanna make sure with Dolores. You were yes on number three, no on the rest, is that correct?
Yeah, the number three was the, was the commercial, right? And, uh, apparently there was some comment about how that area is gonna be affected by the, the Dort Highway extension.
I, I don't, I just want you to yes or no right now. Yes on three, no on the rest?
Yeah, cuz I.
Okay, I have a summary.
Okay.
There's a couple that we can speed by and a couple that we need to discuss. But anyway, I'll just go through these quickly and then I'm gonna give this sheet to Mark. Okay, on the first one, it was two yes, six no. I'm not including the consultant or the planners vote in this, this is just the commission. And of course, Jay's not here. Uh, on number two, it was seven yeses, one no. On number three, it was seven yeses. Uh, I did not have a chance to visit the site, so I did not vote. So it was seven to nothing. On four, it was four to four. On five, it was six to two. And on six, it was six to two. So the most controversial one is gonna be, uh, item number four. Coincidentally, number four is four and four. Mark, you can have this to lead the discussion if you want. I'll do whatever the chairperson would like. You're welcome.
That's fine.
Mr. Gelling? Can, so can we, can we decide not to spend any more time on number three?
Just seven and oh?
We had, we had a couple that were sevens, didn't we? We had a couple of them that were sevens.
Yes. There was one seven, nothing, that's, and, uh, it was one seven, one. And my suggestion would be whoever was a dissenter on that, you know, unless they have a strong argument, we ought to just go on. And Mark, you know who was the, the dissenting voter?
Sure.
Ask that individual.
Yeah, you know, I did have a chance to, to talk a little bit about this. And, and I'm, I would like to know, and I think it's important, and I sure don't wanna, I don't wanna ruffle any feathers, and I think we can, we can discuss this and we can have another discussion about this whole thing. But I wonder and wanna make sure that the commission either is or is not comfortable with the idea of sort of doing what you're, you're suggesting. Um, you know, going by, you know, kind of a majority rule. And if, you know, and if so, let's say we talked about number five and the no's didn't change. I guess what I would be curious about is whether or not this body would, would be able to get comfortable after hearing all the argument and whomever might be a dissenting vote, dissenting vote, would in fact, you know, agree with that, or that the commission would say, no, we're gonna do this as a majority vote and let that be the determination. I, I don't know how you wanna do it, but I'd like to raise that as a question.
Mr. Gelling, could I?
Mr. Mansour.
Just make an observation?
All right.
We do votes all the time, uh, and that's fine, but, but in this particular case, uh, just because we, uh, there's nothing that no necessarily preclude one of these landowners from coming forward if we don't change anything, if we leave it exactly the way it is. And there's a compelling project, um, it can still come forward. And, and it will be, uh, more or less no greater or lesser hurdles than it is today. But if we start to change things, then, I mean, we, we do kind of get the ball rolling. So what I'm suggesting is, is that if we, if we don't have a significant amount of the commission, then maybe it's just worth it just to kind of, you know, leave it as it is.
Mr. Robertson?
As I, as I understand where we are right now, I want to affirm the master plan, draft master plan, as it is written right now, as it relates to these properties. I'm receptive to arguments made about women who want to choose it, but as long as, you know, there's a process, if someone doesn't want, if someone wants to amend, request a change in that, they say they have to make the request. And then there's a process that they have to move to at that time. I, I, I guess I just wanted to clear with regard to the exercise that we just need.
Well, I, I appreciate that, you know, and, and that's, that's good for the commission to consider. I, I'm taking a look at this, um, this, this tally, thank you. Um, and from that, based on y- your conversation, I realize that, uh, property four, at four and four, you know, I think warrants some discussion, there may be the ability to, to persuade, uh, one another. Or it may be, you know, that's the kind of one you decide to take out. But it seems to me that we could potentially, um, or I would suggest, let me just put it that way, that we were to go ahead and, and, and based on what we've heard, is to take number one off the table for discussion. And, and we could possibly take number five and six off because it has the same vote, it's just the other way around. Just affirmative as opposed to negative. So if you wanted to go by that, that, that would be my recommendation. And then moving to two and three.
Can we just go through real quick the ones, just so we know what the numbers are?
Oh, sure.
Just cuz I don't, we don't have it in front of us.
You're right, number one was, uh, uh, was summarized as being, um, two of the commission members, um, were in favor of it and, uh, six were not. Number two, seven were in favor and one was not. Number three, seven were in favor, zero were not. Number four was tied at four and four. Number five is six in favor, two opposed, and number six was six in favor, two opposed. So I'm just saying, I think that it's possible, depending on what you want to engage in, you could, you could get rid of number one, uh, number two and three cuz those are seven and one. And then, you know, based on the same reasoning or voting, or however you wanna put it, for number one, you would get rid of number five and six because that's six and two as opposed to two and six. So to me, that wouldn't make any difference other than you get rid of one and you keep five and six.
Well, my comment would be, uh, for example, if I, I was a, uh, a yes on number one, but with six other of the commission members saying no, you know, unless I had a compelling reason to wanna try to convince them to change, I'm okay with that. So, I mean, that's how I would, that's how I would view that. So it's how strongly does somebody feel about their, their position if the majority goes the other way?
I guess what I'm, my summary is, right now, we're, I'm thinking that one, two and three, we probably don't need more discussion on, at this point, correct?
I would ask that the entire commission would agree or?
I agree.
Yeah, so I, I think, Mr. Gelling, uh, I was the other person, I was the other uh, yes on this one, along with Mr. Bandersky. And I don't have any huge issue with that, I don't know.
Talking about number one?
Number one, yeah.
And I guess I'm just trying to get one, two and three kinda moving, let's get on to the ones we get more concerned about.
Then I think then, from basing it on that and the discussion that you guys have just had, and I do appreciate your approach. And I think then that we would wanna give, uh, Commissioner Coulter a chance to talk, uh, a little bit more about, uh, number two. And, and I sure don't wanna put you on the spot, that's not the intention. It's just, that's the difference in the, in the numbers here. So, um, you know, and the question here is, is there a compelling argument? And I guess we could move to that point and ask if Ms. Coulter feels like, you know, her concerns are compelling enough to, to wanna raise them and, and, uh, that's where we are.
I, my concern is more of a process concern rather than the specifics. Um, I feel like we're making, you know, some substantial changes. Um, if we, you know, go with the, the recommend, the, the recommendations of the, um, there are on the map here. Uh, and, uh, you know, a, a change in, by, by changing the future land use map, we're making it easier to change, you know, the ultimate zoning cuz we know that, you know, we're gonna get applications for zoning changes. And, and that, you know, those processes are much more deliberate. I mean, we have, you know, we have to have a public hearing, we often get concerns from adjoining property owners and they have to go through the specific criteria for zoning change. So, um, you know, even if we don't change the future land use map, they can still come in and try to convince us that, you know, this current zoning is not suitable and here's how we need all the other criteria. And that's just, you know, it's a more careful deliberative process with, you know, more discussion than what we're doing tonight, basically.
Can I?
With more of a process issue, you know, uh, than specifics. I mean, maybe ultimately if they come in for a, you know, a zoning change on second, they'll be able to convince me and all the other commissioners that, you know, that makes sense.
I'm interested.
I'm concerned about rushing it through.
Yeah, I, and I'm, I appreciate, uh, Ms. Coulter's, uh, perspective here because the, the one that I'm more passionate about is this number four because I've actually been contacted by, I've actually had conversations with the residents. These people have half a million dollar or more homes. And we're talking about, so in this particular case, I've actually had the experience of that input that you are talking about, that, that there's a commission we haven't maybe gotten on some of the rest of these.
Well, actually, on, on this one, on the second one, I thought there may very well be people in the surround, cuz it's surrounded by a, a whole lot of, you know, residentially zoned properties. And maybe the, some of those areas would like to have a little bit more neighborhood commercials so they wouldn't have to drive a mile or two downhill road, you know, uh, to catch a pizza or something like that, or whatever. Um, so, like I say, that's basically why I voted no on, on, except that one.
If I might add to this conversation about property number two, my discussions with the person who owns that property, who's the same person who owns the corner, um, has indicated they've tried like heck for a good long time to get some more commercial development there uh, next to their existing, um, I think there's a, um, pharmacy, yes, thank you, a pharmacy there. And they just haven't had any luck for as many years as that pharmacy's been there, and that's a long time. But they do see and they know that there has been success and pretty good development from the multiple family standpoint. And if you look at the properties immediately around there, you can see that, um, the ones to the south and then hop skipping over, you can see the, the other multiple family, uh, units, uh, over there. And you can see the densities aren't ridiculous in either of those, any of those. So, um, I think that idea, at least from the communication of the property owner, giving some, giving a little more context to that particular area. Um, it just appears from that owner's standpoint, who says they've tried real hard for all the years that they've been there, um, that there's no bites on, on, on that whole concept of doing anything commercially. So there's some, you know, additional feedback that I realize is secondhand and I'm sitting here telling you that, but I do recall those conversations with them. Um, that made sense to, to, to us and it seemed to fit pretty good into that area.
But that's precisely the type of information that's useful when, you know, a petition for a change of zoning comes up at the planning commission meeting and you have a, a full-blown hearing with the applicant here.
Well, here's, let me point out one thing that would, that, that process-wise, it becomes a bit problematic from a process standpoint. And that is, if we were to do nothing with any of these properties and someone came in, we'll just stay with number two. And this person came in and wanted to rezone that, then we would say, well, you also have to amend the master plan. Because we couldn't let them rezone it for high-density or medium-density residential when it's got a commercial designation. And so in this particular instance, they would have to petition or request and the commission and the township would have to agree to modifying the master plan. So in order to, and that's probably why nobody bothered to do the master plan change over there at, um, Redwood, you called it? That's probably what happened, they found a way around that. I suggest we don't find ways around it. I fi- I suggest we deal with this directly and definitively and in response to the community's input. So that would add, whatever time it would take to go through the process of looking at the master plan and then re-noticing it, going through the sixty-three day review period, sending it out to all the neighboring communities, that's the process that would be associated with any of these that if someone, any of these property owners came in and we adopt the master plan as it is today, not the draft, but the current plan, without changing those master plan land use designations, all of those people would then be required and responsible for coming through and going through that entire master plan amendment process, which is established by state statute. And that means that if these folks wanted to move over the next two years, let's just stretch it out. That means that we might go through, well, in this case, at least six different times of amending our master plan. That's not something that we wanna establish a, a, as a goal or a way to process, um, applications or rezoning. You don't wanna have somebody have to go through all of that in order to accomplish it. So that's just my sort of administrative two cents worth. I know what it takes to rezone property that doesn't have an appropriate underlying land use designation. And I can also tell you that that prohibits and limits a lot of future development in our community if we don't accommodate it. And the way we accommodate it is by getting public input on what the community wants to have in this community, what they wanna see, what the citizens wanna see in our community. And we have an opportunity to respond to that. And I think in a big way that what's being proposed here with these, uh, land use changes is very responsive to the community input we've had to date on the master planning process. Now, we didn't have all those people come in and sit down and talk to us individually. We had a little different approach this year. We had a COVID time period. We didn't have as many workshops and face-to-face kind of meetings as we might otherwise have. And I apologize for that, I wish there was a better way. But I think we kicked a lot of good butt during our process there and we did a good job of getting public input, more than this community's ever had before uh, for any master plan that they've ever done. And not with people standing in front of us, but responding to surveys. And we all looked at that. I think, I hope, everybody's looked at this master plan, you've had it for a while. And those, that, that information is in there, that survey information is in there. And this is, is really. this is, is really very responsive to that. And I'm afraid that if what we wanted to do was push that away, and then say, there's a process to go through, and they get to come to us as a planning commission and say, we'd like to rezone our property, the first thing I would have to tell the planning commission is, no, you can't rezone that, unless and until it gets, uh, a master plan amendment, and that's kind of a big deal. And that's a pretty messy process, and it takes a lot of effort and time and money. And that's, again, you know, that's my two cents, I, clearly, I, I have interest in, in these, in moving this community forward, uh, and I know you all do, don't get me wrong, in the manner in which I, I've received information from the community, uh, and in conjunction with working with our very qualified consultant.
Chairman Gelling.
I would hate to miss opportunities, and I think that these are opportunities, Mr. Renter.
So, I, it's interesting that you hear you say that, because, and it's very strange, because, uh, you've been approached by these landowners, and they probably have an economic interest and a possibility to, to, to make use of this with these changes, and yet, uh, we're willing to take forty-five of a hundred and sixty-four acres right off the table, right off the top. So if we were really concerned, and if this consultant was truly concerned about missing middle, I, I don't, I don't take, I don't take their recommendations very seriously if they're willing to just lop off that, that kind of amount of, uh, potential acreage for missing middle housing, just because it happens to be a mile or two away from shopping. So, I, I, you know, I, I, it falls on deaf ears if we're really saying that we have missing middle, when, when they're willing to just, uh, take that piece off the table.
We need to have it in the appropriate areas, that's my position.
Absolutely.
All right. I don't know that we're gonna get a unanimous on any of these, but, um, all right, number three, number, let's move on to number three for a minute. We're all in agreement that that one's okay?
Totally.
So, so far, we've agreed on one and three. Four.
Excuse me, I would just have to look to Dolores and say, she's satisfied.
Well, well, she was good with three.
Oh, I'm talking two.
I've skipped past it temporarily, I haven't made a decision yet on that. But I just, I'm trying to get anything concrete, so one and three so far, we're, we're good with. All right, well, just wanna move on to some of the, I would suggest, because we're split on four, that we have a little bit of discussion, and I'd be willing to change potentially my, uh, position on that one. Taking off, Mr. Yoncho.
I think that, uh, the surrounding neighborhood, um, deserves to have a lower density than what is being proposed. Uh, I think that a low-density residential would be the, the proper way to go, it's currently a rural estate, if I'm not mistaken, rural residential. But, uh, most of the property around there, Warwick Hills, the, um, the subdivision to the east, those are ten-acre parcels with very large houses, um, and north and south on Saginaw Street are very nice homes on large parcels, and, uh, I think that this would be, like, he might consider it to be a spot zoning situation, if we went ahead to, uh, raise the density as high as, uh, MDM, or multiple family.
Yeah, anybody else wanna talk about that?
I would support that, the other comment, or note that I made would be the increased traffic coming onto Sagino Road, you know, from whatever, how many ever units they put in there. And, uh, there's a lot of traffic on Sagino Road right now.
And I, I'd just take a minute to, to reiterate, again, um, there are some pretty, um, substantial houses on, on larger pieces of property around this, and, uh, I think that this would, you know, kind of fundamentally change the character and, uh, and make, uh, frankly, would, um, you know, not do anything to improve the housing values of the people that are surrounding, so.
Primary issues that I've identified in the conversation so far is density, traffic, and then essentially it being out of context. So maybe it'd be a good idea to ask anybody who maybe wasn't, or was in agreement with that, if they agree with those comments of, and maybe look at it in a different perspective, having heard those comments from other commissioners, um, and whether or not you might want to or would consider, um, changing your thoughts on that.
I'll step up to it, because I'm familiar with that area quite, quite a bit, and, and I really have to admit that, uh, high density is not gonna benefit anybody that's there or around it.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Brown? The new home that's there, uh, by Warwick on Saginaw, that's obviously low-density, that beautiful home has just been built there, I think, I'm not sure the owners are even in it yet, but I, I would not be in favor of having high-density adjacent to it at all. I think it, I think it would take away from the beauty of the properties.
That's that curve, that curve on Warwick.
Burning Tree?
Burning Tree, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm hearing that maybe we don't wanna do four?
Well, what we have is six to two now, and so, that's the notes I've got, and that's changed dramatically, so there still are a couple of other folks, including yourself, Mr.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be willing to change my position on that.
Then, then it is changing considerably, so, I think the other one that we had was Mr. Robertson, and, um, it, it, everyone else has changed this to a no, and based on the discussion that we've had, is, is it changed your opinion?
If I, if I understand the gist of the conversations, uh, then, what we're, what we're facing here is, right, I listened to your comments from ten minutes ago, um, you posed the questions whether or not, if we don't make accommodations now to, you know, land use, huge land use, that the burden associated with, with amending the master plan as a precursor to rezoning, it would be too great, or, 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 so these properties, to me, that we lose opportunities for growth as a result, is that accurate statement?
I, I don't think saying it would be too great is, is accurate, I think that's-
It's a greater burden.
It is a greater burden, it's an add, it's an added burden, let me put it that way, and let me, let me be clear about what that means. We don't have a requirement for a property owner to amend the master plan on their own. We don't have a process for someone to come in and simply make an amendment, they can come in and make a recommendation, um, but we aren't triggered the same way we are with a zone change. We're triggered for a zone change, but not for a master plan amendment. My point is, the master plan would have to be amended, so therefore, the, the township would have to take that on. I was talking about the process, and the, and the length of the process, and the challenge associated with the process, that's what I described, was, the process takes a minimum of sixty-three days for the public hearing, you have to contact all the local, um, utilities, and you have to put the notice in the paper, you have to go through the, the process that we've gone through since we've noticed it, um, not the entire process that we did, we would have to open it up, we would have to give the public an opportunity to weigh in on it, that length of time would need to be determined by the commission and/or the board, um, but there is that absolute obligation and requirement for there to be a sixty-three day public hearing process.
So by, by making the decision that we are, I don't want to be a process, I mean, we're looking at these six parcels, are we, like, by the commission, that's good, that means the master, the draft, the master plan?
No, that's why it's a draft. I would say if we were sitting in the public hearing, and we were, now, that doesn't mean that people can't come forward during the public hearing, and they may, and have completely different ideas than what we're talking about here tonight, but, but that would be last minute, this is part of the process. I would say this is a integral part of the process, it's coming a little later than I think everybody wished it had, but it's here, and it's appropriate, and it's, it's the right time to do it, this is the time we have.
I, as I say, because I, a moment ago, when I said that my interest is in supporting the master plan as it's currently drafted, because that, it's, it's, I'm comfortable with it, based upon dialogue we have the last several months-
Right.
-as a, as a, as a planning commission member, so, um, if there are concerns raised about the changes that are being suggested, uh, I'm more deferential to the concerns in objection, because that is, that, that, we are, it is taking place, late in the process, if I understand, I mean, still, we're still in the process, I agree that the process is over, but we're very, you're very, we're very close to, uh, to the end, and so, is it, is would this be considered a last minute, a last minute change?
I think that's a matter of perspective, but-
Okay, I, I'm posing, it's a somewhat rhetorical question, but, I mean, I'm, I'm a little off on, 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 I have expressed an interest in seeing development come to this township, we need to have development, and you're, uh, you're arguing, or you're prefacing, setting the stage for the discussion, is the importance of more rooftops, more residential property, that's, that's the basic thrust of these changes, is either more residential property, more, uh, of the, more varied opportunities for, than the rest.
Absolutely. Um, and the dialogue that we're having, I think, is, is, hasn't happened before, we're having this opportunity to have the discussion back and forth, and, and I think the term compelling, or however you wanna put it, uh, argument, or support for, or whatever you wanna call it, is, is important, and, and that's part of the conversation, is, are you hearing something now that you didn't know or think about before? And is that, you know, adequate enough to help you to, to change your position or your mind on things? You've got three fellow planning commissioners who have so far changed their mind on this particular item, and they-
From us, from-
From approval to opposition, and that's based on the conversation that we heard from the folks who we asked to speak first, which was the folks who had the opposition, and that was based on, on the, the increase in density, I, I've just pulled a few of the key words, I didn't write it all down, uh, and then, of course, the increased traffic, and, and that's a very good point, Saginaw's a busy street, there's nothing that's been said that's, that's, you know, just out of the ordinary, and, and of course, it being out of context, um, I can tell you, from my perspective, the way that I looked at this property was comparing it to the multiple-family condominiums that are across the way, there's some beautiful development over near, um, Warwick that are condominium units over there, and that's how I would look at what could possibly go in over here, I wouldn't expect to, um, you know, a low-end development project to go in over here. So just to give you a little bit of thought from where I'm coming from, and I do think about things and consider things like density and traffic and, and so on, um, but I also looked across the street and saw a similar zoning designation, and it's on those large properties already, straight across the street, those ten-acre properties that are deep, they all have a, a medium-density, um, residential designation, um, alre, as a matter of fact, they're zoned that way too, and they're developed that way, except for some of the single families that, and there's a handful of them left. So, you know, there's your context, I mean, there's, there's, there's a lot of different ways of looking at this, there, I don't believe, on a personal level, that there's only one way to look at things, and I think it's important to hear what other people have to say. I do believe that that is, uh, that is important, and these are important comments.
I just wanted to add, um, I mean, another factor in, in some of my decisions about these properties is that there's, there's always the opportunity to do a residential open space, or a PUD for some of these large tracts, where you can't, where we have flexibility, you know, to, uh, put in some attached units, like maybe some attached condos, as well as single-family attached, um, you know, we have some control over that process, so it doesn't rule out, you know, even if we don't, um, uh, you know, change the, the current zoning, that, uh, you know, they can't do some flexible-type development, um-
You can't, but they can't increase the density.
Right.
They cannot increase the density, that's the thing that, no matter what, with a residential open space or a PUD, you still can't go beyond the density. You still have limitations with regards to that, and the, and the unit type, and that's the, that's the one thing that, that is a little bit different. It, what it does is it just compresses what the density you could get on the whole property into a single area, and the idea is to maintain what might be more pristine natural parts of that property, that's what a residential open space does, it does not increase density on the property.
But, I mean, some of the argument for this quote, missing middle, was, you know, we want some possibility for attached units, not all single-family, you could do that kind of thing with a-
And sometimes, those attached units, the value in them, the density needs to be up there in order for the value of attached units to be worth it, that's another factor. Now, that doesn't need to be part of what we're considering, I'm just saying, from a practical standpoint, from a development standpoint, that's one of the reasons you don't see that, you know, you're gonna, you're, you're just not gonna get that. But, um, I think that this particular item, and I wouldn't mind getting more back on track with it, what I'm seeing now is a vote of seven to one on, um, on that, which changed, and so, Mr. Robertson, that's why I ask you the question as to whether or not what you've heard from your fellow commissioners has, has given you any reason to maybe reconsider?
I, I, I'm interested.
That's eight to zero, folks, we're gonna take that off the list for continued discussion.
Uh, I would still like to make two comments, uh, based upon the discussion, and I think that, Mr. Robertson, I think all the commissioners are looking to add more rooftops, okay? But the character of the area is something we have to think about. Now, to your point, Mark, you said you would not expect a developer to come in and put in some low-income kind of stuff, but once we make the change, the developer could do that. We, we cannot dictate what he or she can put on there, once, if, if they're all, all, all the, the things that they do is in tune with what the ordinances say, is that correct?
That's right.
Right.
If that's what the ordinance says, but keep in mind, this is the master plan, this is not the ordinance.
Oh, I understand that, but, once you make a zoning change-
Sets the stage, though.
Yes.
It sure does, I, 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 I will never deny that one, it does set the stage.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we wanna move on and talk about five and six?
Indeed, um, uh, I, I, I don't know if you, uh, it was, the, number five is a six to two, and, um, we have Mr. Yoncho, Ms. Coulter, who, um, identified, well, indicated they had some concerns, and maybe, again, it's, we ought to hear what those concerns are.
Mr. Yoncho?
Uh, if you're looking at the, uh, large map of, uh, parcel five, um, you can see that the front part, right up to Baldwin Road, is wetlands, all the way to the east and all the way to the west. Um, it's gonna be very difficult for access. In the past, the people that live on both sides are friends of mine, um, and not long ago, the parcel to the east, that owner was approached to sell his property, or to sell an easement down his west property line for access to that parcel. The fellow to the west, he's now, he's currently building his dream home, uh, if you remember, there was an old farmhouse on that property that burned down five or six, seven years ago. Um, but he's, uh, building a replacement home and, uh, he's got, uh, some thoughts of doing some farming type projects there. And, uh, I know he will not give up any of his land for access. Um, to put any type, type of a higher zoning in that parcel is just gonna impact any type of access that they put in. And there'll probably only be one access and no other opportunities for um, emergency vehicles or anything else to get to the back of those properties. So, um, those are some of the reasons that I've voted no on that parcel change.
So this, just so I understand, parcel five, is it one, the one piece or is it actually two pieces?
It's just, it's the two pieces. It's, uh, on the map, it's that large one where the number five is. And then to the east, it's the one immediately adjacent. The, the more highlighted blue is the property in question. Your, your map should, I think, you know, you, you should be able to.
Property to the west. Yeah, you said east.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. To the, to the west. Thank you. Yeah.
Here, of course.
This one and this, the narrow one and that.
I didn't see it as more highlighted.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I got deep look, it kind of pops out a little.
Yeah, I know.
It's just a question on the future land use map that looks under five, it looks like a much larger parcel is.
Yes.
Highlighted.
Yep, that's a, that's an error.
Yes.
I guess the comment about access, if this remains a piece of property that is, has a individual house on it, it likely is only gonna have one access, but maybe the concern is if you have multiple or it changes to an MDM that you have uh, more opportunities for something to go wrong potentially, I guess I'm guessing. At what point do we require two means of access? I mean, I know.
Well, I couldn't say where we absolutely require it. It's going to be based on the county road commission's standards for, um, ingress and egress. So it would need to be a considerably higher number of units than you could ever put on just these two small, you know, these two, this 15 acres, let's say. You, you wouldn't be required if they went to the full density.
If it went full density and it was for the proposed change, that's a hundred and fifty acres.
Yeah.
Which I would think we want two accesses at that point.
It, it wouldn't be the point of having two accesses as much as having adequate ingress and egress. Not unlike when you build a house or have a building. You, that could be a double lane coming in or, or a left, uh, center lane. I, I couldn't tell you for sure. Uh, but this small of a piece of property wouldn't be required to have two. You can, you can look at a number of the other ones around that, even across the road there. There's more units in there potentially than you could get on there or would get. Considering how much is limited and you've got to put in setbacks and, you know, um, parking and all that other stuff. So it's not as if the whole thing could be covered with residential units. Um, what could be is, is the areas that are within the building footprint, which is the setbacks, uh, the drive aisles and all that good stuff, required landscaping, all that. You really start to reduce it. Then, of course, you only have a certain amount that you can cover the land. Um, for certain densities. And we got some of that information here. You know, you got, in some instances, the maximum lot coverage is only 25%. So, um, you know, you're limited in that regard too, to the number of units you could put on a piece of property. Um, and then, uh, moving into, well, the low density is 25% as well. You know, so once you put in all the setbacks and you, you incorporate things like, um, landscaping, like I said, the buildings, the, the foot coverage, the building footprint and the medium density, it's, you can only have a maximum of 50% impervious surface and that's the buildings and the paved surfaces. So, um, you know, if you were to look at that, you know, you, you take that 15 acres, carve it up and you could only have half of that, seven and a half. So then when you do the math, now you're only talking about 75 units or something, right? So, so those are other things that come into play when you look at and consider designing and developing property that what we're seeing here is a total acreage. When you do the math and you max it out at, at the maximum amount of acreage, you really ought to back that off by, well, how much is the actual lot coverage allowed? And when you put that into place, then, then that would have a, a, an effect as well. Now, you could, you could double it up. You could maybe make them taller units or whatever. You could compress the, the footprints, if you will. You could potentially get a higher number, but the fact is, is that you're gonna limit that amount by virtue of those site characteristics and, and the limitations.
I guess after hearing the discussion, Mr. Yoncho, yourself, I'm still in favor of this one changing the MDM. It's my personal. Else, is there anything that sways in one way or the other? Okay, um, let's hit number six and then we'll be back.
Okay.
What was the vote on five? I missed it.
Six, six to two.
Yet on any of these in my mind.
Okay.
The, um.
Wanted to hear a little bit more and then we'll get down to making the exact decision.
Number six, um, we had, uh, Mr. Banderski and Ms. Coulter. Not, uh, in agreement with the recommended, proposed, um, master plan land use change.
This property has R2, this is, has R2 on one side, MDM on the other. Correct.
Yeah, and it has a utility right of way running right through the two properties. And of course, to combine those two from a development standpoint, they would need easements across that utility access. And property number, the lower portion of that has zero access to it unless they were able to obtain the easements across that, uh, right of way there. And that happens, but the point is that's a, uh, that's in the mix. And you can see, if you look to the, to the east, you can see that Cold Spring Trail does in fact do just that. It runs directly across there. Through that easement in the back. They obtained an easement and they connected, uh, you know, the lower portion of that. And I would think something along the same lines is probably what they would consider doing.
So I, I guess my question, uh, about what you had circled on page four dash seventeen, does that affect development on this parcel six? The, uh, I know, that was actually in regard to if they wanted to build single family instead of MDM.
Right. Yep.
The other.
I'm okay to change.
Pardon me?
I am okay to change.
What do you mean? Oh, you were, oh no. Okay, so you're saying that it is now a seven month?
Yep. Well, I'll, I'll be courteous and ask if Ms. Coulter has, you know, any reason or would.
I'm concerned about increasing the density in this area, um, and also any traffic considerations on Hill Road because you already have, you know, pretty well-developed sections on each side of this, this parcel. Um, and if you increase the, the density, um, you're really gonna have a lot of, uh, it could change the character of the surrounding area, but it also could have some real traffic issues for Hill Road. It's in addition to my general concern about the process. I mean, again, if this were to come before the commission on a, uh, petition to change the zoning, we would have the benefit of hearing from folks in surrounding neighborhoods as to what they, uh, you know, what they would feel about having these, uh, multiple dwelling, um, developments on your side of, uh, single family developments.
Chair, Chairman Gullen, I have a question for Mr. Lloyd. This, uh, MDM thing that shows up here, the Cedar Bend Drive, the one that's there, and that it's, uh, directly to the west of this piece of property along Hill Road. How, which, which came first? I mean, the, the, the Barrymore Road and the rocking chair or this? Huh?
Big Rock.
Yeah, I mean, which, which came, Big Rock, which came first?
The MDM is more current.
Is more current?
Yes.
So it went through some process to.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, and I have a point to make about that process. And, and, and Ms. Coulter, I truly appreciate your analysis of these things. And it's, I think, giving us all an opportunity to, to understand things a little bit, I hope better. And the thing that I would point out is that through a zone change in particular, somebody comes in to amend and do a zone change, a rezoning, if you will, there's a requirement for a traffic analysis in, in most instances. So, so that would be looked at. And the, and the, and the, let's say the implications of that traffic analysis could result in limiting the density in an area unless, of course, it's determined that the streets could accommodate that increase in density. And if the streets as currently designed could not accommodate that, there may in fact then be a requirement for that developer to increase the size of the road, put additional, uh, traffic control measures into place, lights, uh, you know, turn lanes, things of that nature. So those would be the kinds of things that would be, as I'm sure you all know, looked at if and when a zone change was to occur. So as we've gone through a couple of these and identified traffic, which is a perfectly good example and a perfectly good reason to, to consider things, a traffic analysis almost always required for a zone change unless it's considered and so small and so insignificant that you can use the, the basic standard, uh, Traffic Engineers, uh, book and do a quick analysis and go, yeah, this is gonna add 70 cars per hour. And that's not nearly enough to impact traffic on Hill Road or something to that effect. That's, that's not a, a fact. That's just a quick comment, an example.
Chair.
Oh, I was just pointing out, we're talking about 69 acres, which is a pretty substantial, uh, you know, number of units that would be added to this area.
So what I, what I think I, I understand here then is, is that, you know, some time ago, this parcel that's currently shown as MDM, someone had to go in and get a change to the master plan for a parcel that looks to be about, I'm just gonna, you know, appears to be about 30 acres, maybe, I don't know, less. And they were, they found it economically, um, viable to do that, went through the process, got it approved. And so, um, I mean, if, if we don't change anything, it would seem that, you know, that same kind of approach could be used for the 69 acres. And, and the commission may, may agree to, to change the land use and the zoning for it. But I just, I say, I'm just saying that if it wasn't an impediment to do that small piece, I don't see where it would be an impediment to change the master plan for the much larger one.
And, and I, I, I would, uh, I would want to point out that sometimes what happens when we amend a master plan, what we do at the township level in this case is we amend that master plan in order to to match what is there. So I can't say that that was or wasn't there before the master plan was changed. But what I can say is sometimes we do that too. So, for example, when we did our existing land use analysis of the township, we went around and looked at, well, what's where and what in fact is inconsistent with our master plan. And when we see those things, we identify and recommend changes to accommodate that. Unless the fact of the matter is, is that we might want to eliminate that quote unquote non-conforming use or activity. So it would depend. But there are instances, uh, when communities go through this master planning process and do in fact find properties that, you know, they need to amend the master plan simply to accommodate what's already there. And I don't know in this case.
We've had some discussion about all six properties so far. And I guess my feeling that we're not going to get, um, unanimous agreement on all these properties. Sounds like we did on one for sure. I guess is a planning commission willing to take a vote on each of these? And with eight members here, would take a five to three vote in order, would they accept a five to three vote, I guess, on, uh, in the affirmative to, um, change the.
Either, either change it or not.
Yes. Make a decision that way so we can, and get things off center. All right.
I would support that.
It sounds, it sounds like we at least have a consensus on that piece. Um, so then I, I propose we go through each one, one by one and take a vote. Does that make sense?
Do you want to call that, sir?
Yes.
Would you like me to go over this, uh, chart again or with the numbers?
Yes.
I, I will be happy to. I, I see that number one, uh, everyone is in agreement, um, not to change that. Then on number two, we have seven to one on that one. In support, thank you. And then on number three, we have seven O to support that. And then on number four, we have eight O on a no for that. It's gonna show quite a bit on, on a map like that. Um, so if, if that, if that's something you guys would like to have, I would be glad to.
I, I don't know if I'm just the only one.
No, I don't think so. I'm seeing some other folks who have some interest.
What's going on with the Dorde Highway extension?
Yeah, I could probably put a little write-up together. That, that might help.
That's good. Yeah, I would appreciate it.
I can do a little write-up. I'll be glad to. We got good people at the county who would happily provide me with that.
You also have.
Oh, no, I get those.
You also have a Grand Blank News representative, writer, that if she could put some of that detail, more detail than maybe just it's gonna be this or that. But a nice spread, whatever you want to, you know, develop for us, that they take that and put that in the paper, that'll help, I think, the community to understand better what it is or what the timing is.
Timing as well, sure.
Um, just in case people are not aware, the Cook Road, uh, should be opened back up, I think, this week, next week. And, um, on Facebook in several areas, including the residents of Grand Blank Township Facebook page, there are, there's drone footage flying over, uh, Dorde Highway, the interchange, as well as Cook Road and up and down. All the way to Baldwin Road.
That could be added to the newspaper article or, you know.
So is the natural gas line, pipeline completed?
Yes. It's right by my house, two, one house away.
You should know.
Well, this portion is completed. Let me put it that way. They have another phase coming again next year.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Well, it was tough because Cook Road is closed. And then on Baldwin Road, they were doing work there. They had one lane that you had to wait there for 10 minutes, maybe, then get access. So a lot of people have been affected by that construction.
All right, I think we're just about done, probably. I'm guessing we're done with old business?
And with the agenda?
No, no new business today, I don't think. No committee reports. We, you had those already.
Not at this special meeting.
Sounds like a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Before I do that, I will make the motion. But before I do that, I have two comments. First off, any members of the commission are veterans? Are any of the members veterans?
Domestic wars, yes.
Okay, 'cause I what? I wanted tomorrow's Veterans Day. I wanted to acknowledge that. And secondly, I'd like to politic, publicly recognize Mr. Mansour for his contributions to the planning commission. I mean, he's been very professional. He's been challenging. He's asked insightful questions. He's been very courteous. And I think he's been a, a overall, helped us, the planning commission, improve. So with that, I'd like to say thank you very much for your service.
It's been a privilege. Thank you very much.
With that, at 7:40, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Vanderski to adjourn, support by
Mr. Mansour.
Mansour. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the motion passes seven zero as Mr. Horsen steps out before that.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.